Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, September 29th, 2020. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, council members will be participating in an online city council meeting. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. In lieu of in-person attendance, the city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in council meetings. Will everyone please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Gabe Letty?
Here.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Talamontis?
Present.
Vice Mayor Frutos? Mayor Springer?
Here.
Noting the absence of Vice Mayor Frutos, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move forward tonight, I would just please like to have a moment of silence to commemorate the passing of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There will be one period of general public comment this evening. The public will be able to comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you wish to participate, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. Tonight, we'll be journeying in memory of former Burbank mayor and councilman Vincent Stefano Jr., who passed away on August 24th, 2020. Many in Burbank knew him simply as Vince, a loving husband, father, and grandfather, and a loyal friend and active member of our community. Born in 1938 to Vincent Senior and Mary Stefano, descendants of Italian immigrants, Vince was a lifelong Burbank resident, graduating from John Burroughs High School in 1957 as part of the last winter class. He went on to attend the University of Southern California, where he received a Bachelor of Science degree in public administration. At USC, Vince channeled his passion for service into becoming a student body leader, an active member of Thetis Phi fraternity, and president of the Trojan Knights. Vince ultimately earned a law degree from Loyola Law School, where he served as president of the Loyola Bar Association from 1963 to 1964. Vince practiced law for over 40 years, starting his own law practice and counseling countless local clients in matters of family, real estate, and corporate law. Vince helped hundreds of individuals throughout his career, many times pro bono. He also served as deputy city attorney for the city of Los Angeles, deputy district attorney for Los Angeles County, and city prosecutor for the city of Burbank. Vince was a firm believer in civic duty. His passion for local politics and debate led him to run for Burbank City Council, serving from 1973 through 1977, and as mayor from 1974 to 1975. Vince was largely responsible for initiating the city's paramedic program and improving its safety retirement formula in the CalPERS Pension Plan for Police and Fire. He also served on several other boards and commissions for Burbank and was an active member of the Providence St. Joseph Medical Center and Providence High School Communities. Without question, Vince was most proud of his family. He leaves behind his wife of 45 years, Mary Lou, five children, and 12 grandchildren. He took great pride in his children's accomplishments, consistently teaching them to work hard, play hard, love deeply, and be loyal, while always putting family first. Vince loved spending time with friends, attending USC football games, and retreating to Dana Point on weekends. But most of all, Vince cherished times spent with his family. Tonight, City Council conveys our deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Vince Stefano Jr. and remembers his strong work ethic, sense of pride, integrity, and contributions to the Burbank community. In lieu of flowers, the family appreciates donations made in honor of Vincent Stefano Jr. to Sisters of Providence. A celebration of life will be held in the spring for his extended family and friends. Thank you, Vince. We remember you. We have six announcements this evening. The City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for one scheduled vacancy on the Burbank Housing Corporation Board of Directors. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, September 30th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office or visit the city website at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. The city of Burbank reminds residents to complete the 2020 census by the September 30th deadline. An accurate count ensures federal funding for more than 100 community programs. Census forms can be completed online at my2020census.gov, by phone at 844-330-2020, or by mail if you receive a paper form. The Community Development Department is hosting an online community workshop on Saturday, October 3rd, 2020, at 11:00 a.m. on the 2021-2029 Housing Element Update. Staff will provide an overview of the city's plan for housing over the next eight years, and will seek input on the housing needs of the community. The workshop will also include a discussion of environmental justice that will be addressed as part of the update process. Residents can watch the workshop live on Spectrum Channel 6 or AT&amp;T Channel 99 and on the Burbank Channel YouTube page. Workshop participants will be entered into a raffle for a chance to win gift cards to local Burbank eateries. You can find out more about the online workshop and the city's housing element by visiting burbankhousingelement.com, or contact Senior Planner Lisa Frank at 818-238-5250. The city of Burbank is participating in the National Firefighters Foundation's Light the Night for Fallen Firefighters Campaign from September 28th through September 30th. The event commemorates 103 firefighters who have passed away on the job this year or due to job-related diseases nationwide. In support of this initiative, as dusk turns to night, various city buildings and landmarks will be lit in red, including Burbank City Hall, Burbank Water and Power, All Fire Stations, Warner Brothers Studio, Nickelodeon, and Disney. This annual event pays tribute to firefighters who have made the ultimate sacrifice and serves as a beacon of hope for their families, that our nation's heroes will always be honored and remembered. For more information about the National Firefighters Foundation, visit firehero.org. Burbank residents, are you interested in becoming more involved in your community but don't know where to start? Residents Inspiring Service and Empowerment, also known as RISE, is a free nine-week program that aims to inspire and empower locally-based leaders from the city of Burbank to create a positive impact in the community. Applications are available online at burbankca.gov/Rise and will be accepted until October 31st. For more information, please call 818-238-5175. Madam City Clerk, would you please read our last announcement regarding vote-by-mail drop boxes and vote centers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city of Burbank is, in collaboration with the county of Los Angeles, has four ways in which voters may cast their ballot for the November election. For this election, every voter will receive a vote-by-mail ballot. The county will begin to send the sample ballot booklets during the week of September 21st through October 13th. The vote-by-mail ballots will be going out during the week of October 5th through October 27th. We have different options of how the voters can actually submit their ballot. Once a voter is ready to cast their ballot, that will be mailed starting the week of October 5th. They may mail their ballot back to the county of Los Angeles or drop it off at one of our four 24-hours, seven-days-a-week vote-by-mail drop boxes located around the city. Boxes are currently being installed. Actually, they have been installed, we confirmed today with the four sites, this week at Burbank City Hall, Buena Vista Library. We also have George IZ Park by Jocelyn Adult Center and Ralph Voie Park, and will be available to the public starting October 5th. The second option is voters may also participate in early voting by dropping off their vote-by-mail ballot at any one of the five-day and 11-day vote centers in advance of election. The confirmed vote centers are as follow. One is at the Burbank Youth Center on Santa Anita, Buena Vista Library on Buena Vista, Little Chapel is on Avon Street, Robert Gross Park is on Empire, and Jefferson Elementary School is on Sixth Street. They can also finally vote on Election Day. They may drop off their ballots on Election Day and also participate in the 11-day vote centers at the same locations I mentioned early. If they have any questions, if the voters have any questions regarding the sites or the election, please feel free to call the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851. Thank you.
Thank you. I remind our viewers that if you wish to participate in general public comment, the phone line is now open. Please call 818-238-3335 to join the queue. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually do not have anything to report for tonight.
Thank you. Will the city attorney please report on closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met earlier this afternoon for enclosed session under labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city negotiator was Management Services Director and negotiating with the Burbank City Employees' Association. I have nothing further to report out. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the council on any item, on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you'd like to participate, please call in now at 818-238-3335. Remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes. We ask for your patience as we finish up with one speaker and move to the next. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. Ms. Mullins, do we have callers online for public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have a caller in queue right now. Will be transferred.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Fyel Dojic. Fyel, you are live with council.
As to the current epidemic situation in Burbank, the situation is currently much better than it was, and whether it will remain so depends primarily on each of us citizens. If we continue to act responsibly, as I now see ourselves behaving, we are realistically moving towards lifting the state of emergency. It is evident that the measures are respected, both in institutions and in the economy. What is evident is that our foreign trade is growing. It is approximately the same as last year. We are still recording surplus, which is very important, and then I can say that the economy of Burbank on the wall of Los Angeles County is on the right track, that by the end of the business year, if the security situation remains as it is now, achieved better results than the previous year. I can say that the most important message to the economy at the moment is making contracts for next year, gather jobs. In the following period after COVID-19, as to one point very important in social and cultural life, to organize concerts in our city, we need to find a location to build the facility for holding concerts of famous groups. Thus, in the social and cultural life of our citizens, we will raise the level of the same. Why utilities across Burbank are getting worse and more expensive? The city needs to hire forensic experts to go out on the field, check everything you need, and then establish the facts. We will see if and where the omission occurred and what led to this situation with high utility bills. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Carla Schwam. Carla, you are live with council.
Good evening. I have some questions directed to Ms. Springer, Mr. Hess, and Ms. Albano. About a week and a half ago, I sent you all an email regarding the fence height that was installed by the city adjacent to my property next to the Western Bike Way, the Western Channel Bike Way project. I'd like to know from each of you if you read the email? Sorry, I'm not hearing any responses. Ms. Springer, did you have a chance to read the email? Mr. Hess, Ms. Albano?
Ms. Schwam, we'll respond to your questions at the end of public comment. Thank you.
Okay, well, I have a number of questions, and I'll ask them. If you read the email, did you have a chance to discuss with David Christie, and did you find out where the communication fell apart in regards to his agreement to make the fence eight feet tall? And what is your response now that he did put in writing more than once that we would be getting an eight-foot-tall fence? I did ask and offered a solution to that, which for you to make the fence height eight feet tall, as was agreed to in writing by Mr. Christie. So I'd like to know, since nobody responded to the email, what's your response to that? And lastly, my question is, because I'm not able to hear your answers right now, I have to kind of ask in advance. If your response is, "We do not plan to change the fence height despite the fact that it was agreed to. We do not plan to work with me and my husband on increasing the fence height," do you think that's fair? And how would you feel if the same thing was done to you, that the city would have promised you something in writing, and then a week before basically just say, "You're not getting it"? So those are my questions. Did you read the email? Did you discuss with David Christie the plan? And also, I do wonder if David Christie ever communicated the plan to Omar Mohays or anyone in construction, or did he just simply tell us that we would get an eight-foot fence with no intention of following through on that? Because that, you know, I don't know. I'm not privy to the conversations that go on. I did ask what the communication was. But Don, the construction foreman, did say that he never heard that there was a plan for an eight-foot fence, despite the fact that David Christie had promised that in writing.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Paul Dyson. Paul, you are live with council.
I hear somebody speaking.
Mr. Dyson, you can continue. I'm sorry, we don't hear you, but the line is yours.
No, there's somebody speaking. There's somebody speaking live.
No, it's your turn. We're waiting for you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, Paul Dyson, resident of the Land Show and former inhabitant along Riverside Drive. Actually, I want to just start by saying that I'm concerned about all speed limits, especially the bizarre way that we use average speed limits to determine how fast or what the speed limit should be set at, these prevailing speeds. I realize that's not within the jurisdiction of the city, but I hope the city will support any efforts to get this changed. I know our Assembly member has tried. My key concern is Riverside Drive from about east of Sparks to Main Street. I don't know where they take these readings to get the prevailing speed limit, but the dangerous part is where the street becomes very curvy. There are four curves back-to-back between Sparks and Main Street. Not only is that the area used most by equations, but it also includes a school, a restaurant, a picnic center, multiple residences, Mountain View Park. Lately, there are so many delivery vehicles along there, frequently double parked. It's really quite dangerous. I drive there at least twice a day through that area. And so, I would think that with all those different criteria, especially with the school there, there ought to be, regardless of the prevailing speed limit, there ought to be a case for a lower speed limit than 35 miles an hour, at least, again, from that section from Sparks east through to, really through to the city limit of Glendale. We had 30 miles an hour before, and even though there may not be many accidents reported, I can attest the fact that there are multiple times when I've called the Public Works Department to come and repair the irrigation systems to those planters that are in the intersections where they've been run over by out-of-control vehicles. So could you please do what you can to support Item 6 on the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tamala Takashi. Tamala, you are live with council.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Tamala Takahashi, and I have a few items I'd like to comment on tonight. The first one is regarding the email I sent to council yesterday, which was a request for discussion and more information for Item Number 5 on the agenda tonight, the sunset of the eviction and rent moratorium. Couple questions. Is this for residential and commercial? And how can both kinds of renters get more information, as well as the landlords? And also, why is this item on consent calendar and not up for discussion on the regular agenda? I would like, I think it would be a good idea to have it pulled. Second item I brought up at the Sustainability Commission meeting last week, before COVID, there was some discussion in council about reducing takeout waste at our restaurants. And right now during COVID, we are using a lot of takeout, and the waste is very high. And I'm wondering if that discussion can be brought back, because it would be great to find solutions and options for reducing our waste for takeout. And lastly, I wanted to thank staff for offering the community meetings on Airbnbs and the Golden State area. Both of those meeting sessions were very fruitful for discussion with the residents. And I also would like to comment on, a few months ago, there was a discussion during council about having community meetings with the police department. And I'm wondering if we can replicate the success with these other community meetings with bringing the police department into a community meeting, perhaps with the Met team and Streets Plus, to speak with the community. So thank you for your time and consideration, and have a great meeting.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Paul Herman. Paul, you are live with council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Springer, Vice Mayor Frutos, and fellow council members. My name is Paul Herman, and I'm running for Burbank City Council. I also serve on the Burbank Water and Power Board, but I want to make clear that I am not here to speak on behalf of the board tonight. But I do want to discuss BWP's proposed COVID-19 Assistance Program, which is on tonight's agenda. I'm very proud of our utility for proposing this program, and of our board, which had a very robust discussion about it. While I'm in favor of this program, I believe it is possible to expand it to include those who have been economically harmed by COVID but are not eligible for this particular program. You see, this program is scheduled to start November 1st, and is eligible only to those customers that can prove they are currently unemployed or furloughed at that time. What about all those customers that may have been economically harmed over the past six months, but who have been fortunate enough to have been rehired or found new employment? I think the council should consider expanding this program to make it retroactive to those customers who have been economically harmed through job loss, regardless of their current employment status. Also, I'd like to encourage the council to prod BWP to consider creating a similar program to provide economic relief to small businesses here in Burbank. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I couldn't hear anything Mr. Herman said. Is there something wrong with the sound system, or is it just me?
I think it was just you. I think. I don't know. I heard him just fine.
Okay. I couldn't hear anything he said.
Okay, somebody is coming to your rescue.
Thank you. I heard him fine, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Talamontis, could you hear? Oh, yeah, okay. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Constantine Anthony. Constantine, you are live with council.
Hello, my name is Constantine Anthony. I am currently running for Lord of City Hello, my name is Constantine Anthony. Uh, I am currently running for the Labor City Council, and I'm endorsed by the Great Futures Association. I would love to see our city council, uh, take up the issue of school funding. I'm so proud to have all five of you endorse the, um, the last parcel tax measure I. It did get 54% of the vote, but for school funding, it needed 6.7%. However, I would like to see a report from city staff on a ballot measure that was passed in 2018 in Pasadena, which guarantees 30% of their local sales tax goes to their school district funding. See if we can apply that to a parcel tax passed by our city councils. If we can get a 51% vote at the city level, that would guarantee funding, and then a similar ballot measure like Pasadena has would guarantee that might go to our school district. I know the five of you really want to see, uh, school funding, uh, fully funded at our public school district, so that would be a, a great benefit to our city. So thank you very much, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have any more callers in queue, and the lines have been open for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for brief response from city council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Who'd like to start? Okay. Um, I would like to thank all of the callers. And, um, Ms. Schwamm, I'm sorry, I, I did not see your email, but I will go back through, and, um, I'll request that staff reach out to you, RE the, the fence. And, um, thank you, Mr. Dyson. I, um, really appreciate your call, and speed and pedestrian safety, I think, are important throughout our city. And, um, thank you, Ms. Takahashi. And, um, you bring up some very good points, and thank you, Mr. Herman, and we'll save that for when that agenda item comes up. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Gableletti.
To all the speakers who spoke this evening, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, Ms. Schwamm, I, I know about all the emails you wrote to us in June, ending, I think, June 22nd, after David Christy responded to you about the proposal. Uh, and you and your husband, Chris, whom I remember meeting when this whole process began, um, have, I know, struggled with the bike path and with matters concerning your property. I just wanted the community to know that many of the things that you raised, including your concern about the bike path being level with the street, which the staff responded it will not be, there will not be access, uh, that, that the contractor's going to help you with landscape in your backyard, as I understand it, you're selecting some plants. Um, I, I just guess, I say, it's, it's sad to hear that you are still so devastated by this process, although I think from all the communication that we have had back and forth regarding putting it in and putting it in a way that is respectful as possible for your residents and your backyard is something that the staff has really tried to do. And I think that Mr. Christy has made an effort, including moving a light standard away from your property and farther along. There have been a number of things that have been done to address your particular issues. And I have to say, I think the staff has gone the extra mile here to do this. I'm pleased to hear the mayor will take a look at the wall, uh, the fence. Uh, there are illustrations of the fence in all the prior emails showing what it would be. Um, and it certainly will provide privacy, although I understand that that's, you're going to miss the light coming through the trees. So, uh, there's nothing perfect about these projects, but I do think the community should know that there was a great deal of work done to address all the issues that were raised from the beginning to the process where we are now, and it sounds like there may be even more for you. Um, for the caller who called about the school district, I'm glad you raised it up now. You never raised it before you got your endorsement. So, uh, I will say this about our relationship with the city, with the school district. We have a joint use agreement with the school district. Our city put in millions of dollars into a joint program. Uh, this is before, I believe, you came to the city of Burbank and effectuated a joint project to improve all the athletic fields in the city, and, uh, Councilmember Talamontes was on that oversight committee along with, at the time, I think, Councilmember Gordon also. It included a $14 million worth of improvements to our schools and their fields, and an agreement that has us sharing those in good faith. We, oh, maybe three months ago, secured three years' worth of funding to continue to operate the wellness centers which the city first funded when I was mayor. So there are many things that our city does on behalf and in conjunction and in support of the school district. I think probably the larger, larger issue that community members may want to consider are the statewide propositions, um, no matter where you fall on the issue, that afford additional funding for schools in California. We all supported Measure I. We all lend our support to getting that property tax put in place. Uh, some of us did it twice. And so we are indeed stepping up and have stepped up in the past to get this done. So when you raise the issue of Pasadena's measure, you do it in isolation. And I think it's important for the community, and many in the community do know, that it's not a, an endorsement that causes us to rise to the occasion. It's because we think it's the right thing to do, even outside of a campaigning season. So I'd like to thank the rest of the callers for weighing in. I appreciate the comments by other folks this evening, but I thought that those two callers deserved an answer to some of the issues that have been raised. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Ms. Mullins, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Consent calendar, item number one is city council minutes approve the dark meeting of September 1st and September 22nd and the regular meeting of September 15th. Item two, adoption of resolution approving municipal transfer agreement with the Los Angeles County Flood Control District for the Safe Clean Water Program. Item number three, adoption of a resolution approving contract documents and related to striping plan and awarding a construction contract for the resurfacing of local residential street in the airport-adjacent neighborhoods to Harley and Harper, Inc. Item number four, determination of a position of the leak of California Cities 2020 Annual Conference Resolution. And item number five, sunset of City of Burbank Urgency Eviction Ordinance Number 20-3942. And that concludes the items on consent.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Yes, Madam City Attorney.
Um, Madam Mayor, before we proceed, I'd like to, um, update the council on item number five, so if I can take a couple moments. Thank you. So, um, item number five was a sunset of the City of Burbank's Urgency Eviction Ordinance, and it was a note and file. And, um, part of the reason this went forward, as we explained in the staff report, is that the executive order that we had operated under that allowed us to do an eviction moratoriums was sunsetting on September 30th. And at the time, this basically, we, um, sent it to the city clerks and had it ready to go to print, the governor had not extended that order. Um, and part of the reason he didn't, or at least at that time, is on August 31st, the governor signed AB 3088, which is explained in depth in the staff report and, um, actually preempts, in a way, cities' own eviction ordinances or moratoriums on residential renters. So residential renters are taken care of in combination with our current ordinance that will sunset, and we're not allowed to extend it as to residential, and then under the terms of AB 3088. And, um, we have put together a, um, information about AB 3088. There's a lot of information out there, and it's explained in the staff report as well. So that left the commercial tenants without any protections. Today, we learned that, um, last Wednesday sometime, uh, the governor actually extended the, um, executive order that allows us to enact an eviction moratorium for commercial tenants. And I was able to find that today. I wish that those executive orders were better advertised, publicized, sent to local governments. They're not. And I was, uh, by chance, was able to come across it by reading another article about eviction protections. So, um, that is, even though we had been trying to track it. So the executive order is back in play. It's in effect through the end of March of 2021 for commercial tenants only, which means that the council does have the ability, and we would recommend the authority, to extend the commercial eviction moratorium. So it would sunset as to residential, and it could move forward and still keep protecting commercial tenants as it's written. And if the council is, uh, in agreement with that, um, I would ask that you approve the sunsetting for the residential tenants only, that that would be included in your motion to adopt the consent, and direct the staff to come back next Tuesday night with an urgency ordinance for your consideration that would extend, uh, eviction protections for commercial tenants through the end of the year. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, so in response to Ms. Takahashi's question, it's because the AB 3088 supersedes us, right? She asked why wasn't it on the, um, a regular agenda item? Um, and so I forgot to request your response to that, but I was thinking it's because AB 3088 supersedes anything that we had anyway for residential.
Yes, that is correct. And we did not believe that, um, the authority to, that we had through the executive order had not been extended at the time we wrote this. So now it has, so we're, what I'm suggesting and asking the council to do, instead of a note and file, that you would just say, "The Urgency Evictions Ordinance 20-3-942 sunsets on September 30th as to residential tenants only," and directs staff to return next Tuesday night with an urgency ordinance to extend the moratorium for commercial tenants.
And so then that item would be on the regular agenda?
Next.
The commercial?
It would be on consent next Tuesday night.
Yes, um, Councilmember Murphy.
I'll move the consent agenda with the added proviso just stated by the city attorney.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we move to...
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to pull item number four.
Okay.
No objection? And second motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Murphy and a second by Councilmember Talamontes, and item four will be moved to the back of the agenda, um, after reports to council. Yes, Councilmember Gableletti.
Madam Mayor, I, I want to be clear that, and I must ask the city attorney or Ms. McFarland, that our action tonight to receive and file, uh, just that portion of our urgency ordinance that included the moratorium on residential evictions is being replaced by the governor's order, and that we are going to get the word out to everyone that that is so, because folks may be looking at the agenda items tonight. We're not clear on that. So I'm asking for assurance that we are getting the word out that this is still something, that moratoriums are still in place for residential, and that we will be sure and let our residents know.
Yes, I can answer that question for you. What we plan on doing is, actually, we already have a press release written up. It will have to have a few changes based on tonight's actions, but that press release will go out early in the morning, notifying the press of what we are doing. We will also be putting that on all of our social media. We also have a plan to send that out directly through all of our tenants and landlords that we have emails for. So that will go out, and obviously, our landlord-tenant commission will also know. So we do have some contacts with the Board of Realtors and those types of organizations, and it will be going out to all of those also. So there will be a massive, uh, social media plan and direct information going towards, to all those types of people.
And I would like to add one thing to that, just so that we're clear. AB 3088 replaces, is new protections for residential tenants, and it is a state statute that was signed by the governor, and it went into effect on August 31st. And the staff report, as well as information that will be in the press release, does lay out what those protections are. And so, um, again, I would, besides, there will also, as always, we'll be using the landlord-tenant commission to get the word out. There will be links to information online about the new AB 3088, as well as there's information in the staff report that sets out what those parameters are. So thank you.
Okay, I just have one more question about the commercial portion of it that you're coming back. Um, so the governor extended a commercial eviction moratorium, like today or yesterday?
He extended the order that gives us the authority to, to keep enacting commercial eviction moratoriums.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second, and, um... So, Madam City Clerk?
Yes. Yes, pulling item number four and including, and including the changes the city attorney just made and approved.
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Murphy? Councilmember Murphy? Thank you. I'm assuming you're on mute. Thank you. You're voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Gableletti?
Yes.
And Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are four reports to council tonight. Our first report tonight is for consideration to modify speed limits on Riverside Drive to accommodate equestrian users. Will Public Works Director Ken Berkman please present the report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, uh, council members. At the May 5th council meeting, Councilmember Gableletti requested a first-step report to discuss the potential lowering of speed limits on Riverside Drive due to the presence of equines in the Rancho master plan area, which is bordered by Chavez and Keystone Streets. Speed limits for non-local roadways are set based upon field surveys conducted as part of an engineering and traffic study in accordance with state law. The current speed limit of 35 miles per hour on Riverside Drive within the city's limits was established in this manner. Burbank is one of the, um, one of several cities that may consider equestrians in speed studies, specifically in the Rancho master plan area. Speed studies take into account measured prevailing speeds, accident records, roadside conditions not readily apparent to the driver, such as driveways or vertical and horizontal curves, for example, and may consider residential density, pedestrian and cyclist safety, and equestrian safety in cases like this area. The critical speed that sets our speed limits is called the 85th percentile speed. It's the speed that 85% of us are driving at or below. The most recent survey from 2015 concluded that the 85th percentile speeds on Riverside Drive in the Rancho... Drive in the Rancho area to be about 39 miles per hour and the collision records did not demonstrate any pedestrian, bicycle, or equestrian safety issues. The Burbank Police Department also went back 10 years to research equestrian conflicts on Riverside Drive and found one, which was from a riderless horse. With the survey data, Public Works Traffic Engineering Staff evaluated the speed limit by applying two options in accordance with the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or the MUTCD. Though the collision amounts were low, the collision rate was higher than expected. Therefore, the 85th percentile speed of 40 miles an hour, which is that 39 miles an hour that was surveyed rounded up to 40, was lowered to the 35 miles an hour that we see out there today. A five mile an hour reduction from the 85th percentile speed is the maximum allowable reduction. So the city has already reduced the speed limit on this portion of Riverside Drive as low as it legally can. Should the council want to consider any further reductions in speed limits that are not justified by an engineering and traffic survey, it should be understood that it may prevent the city from enforcing such speed limits. That concludes my report and I and the police department may...
Thank you very much. Councilmember Gableletti.
Some, the sound is, I guess it's okay now?
Yes, it's fine.
Is it okay? Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berkman. Madam Mayor, council members, I would like to ask that this be continued for a week or two because I'd like to go back and revisit and reexamine what was done in 2015. And that will afford an opportunity to kind of drill down a little more and then, so I just would like my colleagues, if it's okay with you, let's just continue it a week or two.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Murphy, unmute, please.
I don't know if it'll make a difference or not, but it looks to me like the police did not consider car-to-car accidents. I know of a number of cars that are parked legally that have been hit by drivers. One guy has lost three cars, totaled three cars in front of his house, based on speed and drunk driving, and I didn't see any of that reflected in this report. And if that should be considered, and I think it should, we should talk about that. And I don't know if Mr. Berkman would feel comfortable, but I think there should be some explanation to the public about the state law that involves speed traps so that if we're trying to reduce the speed here because we think it's a safety issue, then the state might come after us for the speed trap thing, which to me makes no sense and I don't think it makes sense to the general public, but I think they should know what we're dealing with here. So, thank you.
Okay.
I support putting it over for a week.
Okay, well then let's...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Talamontis.
Now, this is a one-step, two-step, right? This is the first step, or did we just go back to this two-step? I'm confused.
Councilmember Gableletti.
First step.
First step, right.
Yes.
Because I remember having this discussion five years ago. We went through it and you were there, Councilmember Gableletti. And the fact, when it came down to it, the city has already reduced the speed limit on this portion of Riverside Drive as low as it legally can be reduced. I mean, that's what it comes down to, Alice. There's something new that we are missing in this report. By putting it over a week, you feel that you can get additional information, Councilmember?
Well, yes, I do. And I think that it just affords me a chance to look into it a little more closely. Councilmember Murphy is right. There's been, I'm aware of two accidents on Riverside Drive, car-to-car in the last two years. I'm also aware of two horse accidents at Riverside and Main Street, and I just need to go back and refresh my memory about those. I think one is within the last five-year period at least, maybe both. So I hear what you're saying, Jess. It's a first step. Let's just put it off a couple, one or two weeks and kind of drill down a little bit and then I think we'll be prepared to see if the council...
Well, can't we just move it to the second step and the drilling will begin or continue or not?
Well, I just wouldn't spend any more time on it tonight. That's all I'm saying.
Well, not tonight, which is, I move it to go to the second step.
Okay, so we can do that. Do you, was that, okay? Like, so the next time it's on the agenda, it will just be the second step?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Berkman.
Mr. Berkman will understand about our one and twos by the time we're done. That's fine, Jess.
Okay.
I mean, Councilmember Talamontis.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hess.
Just because we're taking it to a second step, is there anything, any additional information you would like to see, just so we could provide that to you?
Well, I think the car-to-car accidents that Councilmember Murphy was talking about, I heard the resident lost two cars and he's saying, no, they lost three cars. And I don't know where it took place. It may have taken place on the curb. And then it would, to try and find out the disposition of the two horse accidents, one was a rider whose horse was grazed by a UPS truck. The horse was injured, but not seriously. And the other was a cart that was being pulled and I think a car hit the side of the cart and broke the wheel and the horse took off on Riverside, onto Riverside Drive. So there needs to be a way, Mr. City Manager, of kind of surfacing those things as well as, so that would be the additional pieces of information.
You know, the other question that comes into play real quick is, were they reported, right? I mean, police doesn't know if they weren't, if they weren't reported, they don't know what happened.
Our accidents were definitely reported.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the second step.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next report is for the approval of a purchase and sale agreement for 323333 South Front Street. Will Assistant Community Development Director Simone McFarland please present the report?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for reviewing this item tonight. We really appreciate it. We believe that this is an exciting project that can start the process of leaving a legacy for our future residents for years to come. If you recall, in early March and then again in August, we came to you regarding the property located at 323333 South Front Street. In March, the property, commonly referred to as the Piano Store, was listed for sale and we thought that it might be a good purchase for the city because of its location. The city owns the property on both sides. On one side is the MetroLink Station parking lot and on the other side is a small triangular lot that we will be using for homeless storage. At the time, at the time, the property was listed for $5,950,000 and we obtained an appraisal for $5,680,000. The city council authorized us to make an offer on the building up to the asking price with the thought that we would use funding from the former redevelopment agency loan repayment funds. That same night, city council confirmed the local state of emergency for COVID. Great timing. So besides, the staff decided to wait and see what the market would do and it seems as though the market is holding well. Additionally, at the same time, we were notified by the owner, Tom Tencliff, that the property had an offer and he asked if we would like to also submit one. The city verbally offered $5 million all cash, to which he and his partners agreed to. Following that, the staff developed a list of deal points given to the seller with minor changes, which were accepted. And one of the biggest contingencies, of course, was that we would have to obtain city council approval in open session. The seller also has a contingency that the Piano Store, which is under a lease with Sweet Musical Properties, has the first right to match our offer. Additionally, the seller would like to close on December, after December 31st. In August, we met again in closed session and asked the city council if they would like to continue with the purchase and it's based on the deal points and if so, staff would develop a purchase and sales agreement and then bring back the item to city council for review and that is what we're doing tonight. Staff believes that this purchase is a good deal for the city for the following reasons. As stated, we own the property on both sides and assembling the parcels would add value to each. The property is a gateway into the city as on-ramps and off-ramps for Interstate 5 are located right across the street. The sales price is $680,000 lower than the appraised price and almost $1 million lower than the listed price. Using a most recent comp, the Salvation Army recently sold their building to the Boys and Girls Club. This property has a slightly larger building and they both have almost identical lot sizes. The Boys and Girls Club paid $5.3 million and plans to invest another $200,000 in renovations. The Front Street property, the property we're looking at tonight, is in much better shape. Properties in Burbank hold their long-term value and in a worst-case scenario, the city could possibly resell the property for more than the $5 million. The property is almost fully leased. Smaller leases expire at various times throughout the next couple of years and the largest portion of the building, the Piano Stores, their term, lease term, is up in 2023. Lastly, there are many future uses that the city can use the building for, which include both short-term and long-term leases. These could be, in the short term, to continue with the leases and negotiate new shorter-term 30-day leases, 30-day or month-to-month leases to generate revenue, to cover the cost, and also to fund some of our homeless initiatives. Secondly, we can look at, look for funding, grant funding to spruce up the landscape along the frontage of the area since it is an entryway into the city. Mid to long-term, we could use it as a homeless shelter or transitional housing located within the Piano Store side of the property and place homeless wraparound services with continuum of care services within those offices. These could include partnerships with the county, local nonprofits, such as Family Promise, Providence St. Joe's Medical Center, LA Family Housing, and LA Homeless Services Authority, or LASSA. We could use it as a reuse store that repurposes discarded household items and would otherwise be sent to our landfills. Or we could continue renting the offices with short-term leases until a long-term use is or need is identified. Longer term, for 15 to 50 years, we could do a public-private partnership or a P3 with, for affordable or transitional housing. Or we could possibly partner with the Burbank Housing Authority and Burbank Housing Corporation on another housing project. We could use it for additional MetroLink parking or we could sell the property at a future date for hopefully a profit. If the city elects to move forward with the purchasing of the building and enter into escrow, staff will execute a purchase and sales agreement, conduct our due diligence, and if it goes well, close on the purchase in January 2021. At the same time, staff will start with a long-term planning conversations that will include city council on possible future uses. That's my presentation tonight and I am open for questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Talamontis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. McFarland, thank you for your report. This is exciting. It's a great opportunity for the city for a piece of property like that. It has a lot of options. It's very flexible with how we can go with it or not. So I'm all for it. I just had a question in regards to your first recommendation where it says, "An additional $350,000 for due diligence and closing costs." What do you, what do you anticipate closing costs be and what is due diligence?
Sure, I would like to share my screen. Just a second. So what we did is we put together a little list for you. Closing costs, we estimate to be 3.5% of the sales price, which would be around $175,000. That would include things like escrow, title, those types of things. And then under our due diligence, we also put another 3.5% or another $175,000 and you can see the breakout. There are a number of studies that we will, we will want to be doing as part of our due diligence that provide contingencies to the purchase of the property. And so this will give us a good idea of what kind of condition the property is actually in. And some of these we actually need to do if we are the landowner, such as the asbestos lead and hazmat. We obviously want to do Phase 1 and if the Phase 1 comes back, those are the environmental studies, if that comes back and identifies some potential problems, then we would do a Phase 2. The other things that we would like to do are possibly surveys, physical assessments, that's obvious. We want to see if the equipment in the building is up to par, if the systems are running properly, those types of things. And then check out the ADA accessibility. Are there things that we will have to eventually add or not? And lastly, we want to make sure that the termites aren't eating up the building and we will have problems in the future. So we also have a contingency of 16.5%, which is probably a little bit high, but what we wanted to do is make sure that we come back to the city council and we are underpromising and over-delivering on what we're doing. As you can tell, when we negotiated this contract, we used the city's money very wisely. We under-negotiated. All of these costs, we will also be negotiating and taking bids. And if there are savings, which we hope there will be, that will go back into the fund that we're taking them out of, which would be the redevelopment successor agency fund.
Okay, so all these items that are listed here, they're traditionally the responsibility of the buyer and not the seller?
Yes. A lot of these are, you can do it either way when you negotiate. What we negotiated when we did the deal terms is that we would pay for these. And that was a part of the consideration of going low on the $5 million for the sales price.
So, so we're paying $5 million?
We're paying $5 million for the building.
The developer. And then these $350,000, we're not giving that away. It's, it's to do all these items that are listed.
Right. And the good part about it, it's up to $350,000. And the good part is if we don't need these, or say the Phase 1 comes back, environmental, and says, "There are no problems. We don't see anything," then there's another additional $38,000 right there that we would save. So these things, we're hoping that we will obtain the, these reports for less than what we've quoted here and the money will go back.
So in essence, we're purchasing the building as-is?
Correct. Well, we're purchasing it as-is, but we have contingencies. So say one of these things come back. Say the Phase 1 comes back and it says that there are environmental concerns. So then we do a Phase 2 and there are environmental concerns again. We have the ability through the due diligence to say, "No, we don't want to buy this building at this point because we're too concerned. There are liabilities that we don't want to take on." And that's one reason you do these due diligence items.
Because that used to be a lucky dump site?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Gableletti.
Can you go over the funding sources again, Ms. McFarland?
The funding sources?
Yes. Where'd the money come from?
The money will come out of the redevelopment agency, successor agency funds.
So these are our return funds from the state of California?
Yes, these are our one-time funds when they, when they stopped redevelopment and the state pays us one-time funds for that.
Yes, I was asking that because this is, with respect to the use of the funds, the funds are refunded to us that come out of our former redevelopment agency. I want to say I applaud the purchase of this property. I think that, I appreciate Councilmember Talamontis' questions about, you know, how we go through due diligence. From a policy point of view, this is something that I think we'd all, we have all hoped for, for a few years now. And it affords us an opportunity to use funding out of redevelopment to continue our effort to provide services to the community, potentially transitional housing for the community. We know we have an opportunity to store the possessions of our unsheltered, to help them. And so this is just a very bricks-and-mortar step forward for services and, and facilities that have been needed in our community since we began this path in five years. that have been needed in our community since we began this path five years ago, five or six years ago. So it's welcome. I'm glad to hear it's redevelopment money. It's the kind of use that the money should be put to. One-time funds, one-time purchase. Thank you very much for your report. And, Madam Mayor, I am absolutely going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No, I just have one comment. I've told you all about, you know, I'm always thinking of ways and looking at ways and interested in ways to reduce some construction costs. And one of the seminars I recently attended focused on modular construction. And so I look at this site, and I too agree that it's a great acquisition for Burbank for all of the reasons listed and for the purchase price. And thank you very much for negotiating that below the appraised value and before the ask, below the asking price. But maybe at one of these midterm or long-term, it might be a potential site to try out modular construction, whatever we decide. So I need a motion. Yes, Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is going to be a long one.
Yes, it's a long one.
I recommend approved city's purchase of the real property located 323-333 South Front Street for $5 million, an additional $350,000 for due diligence and closing costs. I approve the form of the purchase and sale agreement and authorize staff to continue negotiating the final form as long as no change to purchase price or description of property being purchased, which final agreement shall be approved as to form by the city attorney's office. Authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the purchase and sale agreement and undertake all actions necessary to complete the purchase in accordance with the final agreement.
Second.
I also amend the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget pursuant to the fiscal impact section.
Thank you. And it's seconded by Councilmember Gable Eddy. Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Gable Eddy?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
And Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Our next report is for approval of a COVID-19 residential assistance program for utility customers. I'd like to invite Joe Flores, Marketing Manager at Burbank Water and Power, to please present the report.
Thank you, Madam. My name is Joe Flores. And councilmembers, my name is Joe Flores. I'm the Marketing Manager with Burbank Water and Power. I do have a presentation for you this evening. Thank you. So in this presentation, I will introduce to the City Council a new proposed assistance program designed to help residents who have lost their job and are approved for unemployment insurance. May I advance, please? So staff recommends that the City Council, one, approve a new short-term $1.5 million public benefits fund, residential customer low-income assistance program for customers who are experiencing unemployment as set forth in the staff report, and attachment one. And two, authorize the Burbank Water and Power General Manager or his designee to administer and implement the program, including but not limited to entering into payment arrangements described therein with electric customers. So tonight, I'm going to be sharing information about unemployment that is occurring in Los Angeles County region, the impact of unemployment and other factors that may play a role in customers choosing to defer paying their municipal utility services bill, how BWP is responding to help customers, and propose a new residential assistance program. Advance, please. So as of September 1st, 2020, the state of California Employment Development Department continued high unemployment in Los Angeles County region. You can see that at 16.6%. This same time last year, unemployment was at about 4.7%. So we haven't seen this type of unemployment since the Great Recession that ended in 2009. However, there's a major difference is that COVID impacted a lot of people all at the same time instead of growing unemployment over time. So in response to the sudden impact of COVID on customers, City Council authorized the suspension of late fees and disconnection of services as a stopgap measure to ensure vital utility services are not interrupted during this time of need. Advance, please. So in addition to the suspension of late fees and disconnections, BWP has been directing customers to other COVID resources available from federal, state, and local agencies. Plus, we're helping customers set up payment arrangements for past-due amounts and offering efficiency programs to help manage the bill. However, despite these efforts, several customers are deferring payment on their municipal utility bill. So in this graph, the orange column shows the current amounts that are past due, and the blue columns represent the current amounts, the pre-COVID amounts that were past due. So based on the data, there are two segments of customers that we are noticing. The first segment are those folks that are just late in paying their bill. However, there's another segment that appears to just have stopped paying their bill. And these folks are shown in the category of past-due bills over 91 days. And you can see that that is currently at about 1.2 million. And at the same time last year, this is 10 times greater than what we saw in the 91 days at 115,000. This growing debt could mean that at some point, customers could face a balloon-type payment once council authorizes the normal collection process that may include disconnections. May I advance, please? So these numbers are dramatic, but I want to make sure that you have some context. The annual sales for municipal services are about a little over $280 million. So the $4.5 million you see here is about 2% of total sales. Please advance. May I advance this slide, please?
Sorry, it locked up. Just one second.
Okay. Bear with us.
Is this the correct slide?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much. So staff is keeping track of those customers that are in the 91-day-plus arrears because it provides a good estimate of potential default. So the current trend is that for 91 days in arrears, to grow by about $227,000 per month. So by July of next year, if the trend continues, we could be looking at about $3.2 million of folks that are past 91 days. Advance, please. So let's look a little bit more closer at these customers that are in these 91 days plus in arrears. So if you look at the very bottom line, you can see that there's over 2,100 customers that are currently more than 91 days past due. And the information shows that residential customers, if you look at the top line, is 80% of those customers that are currently more than 91 days past due. And that 2.2 million that is currently in that is about 66% owed by residential customers. So each month, we would see these amounts growing by the amount that we talked about in the previous slide. Advance, please. So we have about 5,500 residential customers that have past-due balances. Several of those I mentioned are more than 91 days past due. And that's about, it's over 1,800 of those. So unemployment is probably the most likely driver of the high number of residents that are choosing to defer their payments. May I advance, please? So what has BWP done to be able to support, to provide support? So very shortly after the LA County Safe-Red Home order was issued, you know, BWP received authorization to suspend late fees and disconnection to make sure vital services are available. BWP also suspended making any proposals for utility rate increases. Advance, please. And when customers began to defer payments, BWP provided support by offering more extended payment arrangements. However, the amount of customers with a current payment arrangement is less than 250 customers. May I advance, please? Federal and state agencies and legislators also responded with support, including expanded unemployment payments, suspension of evictions, mortgage deferment, and additional funds for income-qualified programs, such as the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, also known as LIHEEP. And the city's website pulled information together for a one-stop location for residents to find out. And BWP is directing customers to that city website to gain access to resources. And BWP also created a one-stop location at BWP's website with COVID-related information that is specifically utility-related. May I advance, please? Yet despite these efforts, the amount of residents with growing past-due amount is concerning. And staff is actively referring customers to BWP's Low Income Assistance Program. But the question is, are enrollment increasing and can BWP play a larger role? May I advance, please? So there, the, BWP does administrate for the Public Benefit Fund. And in the Public Benefit Fund, there are income-qualified programs that we support. And there's four primary Low Income Assistance Program available for BWP in addition to the state. And the first is the Lifeline Rate, which provides rate assistance for low-income seniors. And we have not seen significant enrollment in this program. Life Support is for low-income customers dependent on electric medical devices, and there's not significant increase in enrollment. Project Share provides a one-time payment assistance. And between March through August, we've had 22 customers apply and receive assistance of $100. And the Federal Low Income Energy Assistance Program, also known as LIHEEP, they've helped 81 customers with a one-time payment assistance between March and August of this year. Last year, over the same period, they helped 96 customers. So that's even less this year than last year. And so these four programs are based on annual household income to qualify. So customers may not be taking advantage of these programs because they may not yet be income-qualified on an annual basis. May I advance, please? I put this slide up because there's an important date on here. The LIHEEP program is administered by two service providers for Burbank. One is called Monarien, the other one's called Pace. Their fiscal year goes from, ends in, their new fiscal year starts October 1st, 2020. So anyone who's received assistance prior to October 1st, 2020 is now eligible to apply again. And the income eligibility is almost identical to BWP's Project Share eligibility. So if you've qualified for this, you will also qualify for assistance from BWP as well. Next slide, please. So BWP is proposing using the Public Benefits Fund to provide a short-term assistance program for residents experiencing unemployment as part of a multi-pronged approach to help residential customers honor their utility debt. So implementing these components together will provide meaningful support to residential customers and help them to reduce any balloon utility payment they could face. And I should mention that our Public Benefits Fund spending this year is projected to be down about $700,000 primarily due to suspension of in-home services, but it's also due that folks are not participating as much in our rebate programs as well. Next slide, please. I wanted to remind the council that California AB 1890 authorized Public Benefit Fund and requires utilities to collect a non-bypassable fee based on electric usage, currently calculated at 2.85% of the electric revenues, for investing in four areas, including low-income assistance. And BWP is proposing to use a portion of the Public Benefits Fund for a new Low Income Residential Assistance Program. So we've seen many other public utilities in California use this same approach in using the public benefit funds to help residential customers. So for example, some utilities, early on in the COVID, in March, they decided to provide a flat amount ranging from $25 to $400 to all residential customers across the board. To give you an example, if BWP wanted to do a similar approach and provide $50 assistance across the board, that would take about $2.1 million to be able to do that. So other utilities provide a flat amount of unemployment for unemployed customers plus extended payment arrangement for past-due amounts. And staff is proposing an assistance program to help residential customers that are qualified for unemployment insurance and encourage them to not defer more payments moving forward and also start paying down the amount that may be past-due. May I advance, please? May I advance, please? Thank you. So let me start to get into what this program looks like. So the program would offer customers who live in multifamily housing assistance of $200, or if you live in a single-family, assistance of $300. And the program, the assistance would be provided as bill credits to the electric portion of their bill and be provided over four months. And so the multifamily who would receive total of $200 in assistance, they would receive $50 bill credits over the course of four months. And of course, bonding, a single-family would receive $75 per month over four months. The next slide, please? So I'm going to go over the program summary and cover all the details in terms of funding, qualifications, and conditions. So we're proposing a not-to-exceed amount of $1.5 million to be funded from Public Benefits Fund, and it will be applied as a bill credit on the electric service. We're asking to start this program on November 1st, 2020, and conclude the program by June 30th or when funds are exhausted, whichever comes first. Next slide, please. So to be eligible for receiving assistance, the person would have to be unemployed and have been approved for unemployment insurance. The primary document that we're going to be looking for is the Unemployment Insurance Letter. However, we will consider other documents if that is not available, but provides all the relevant information that shows the qualifications. So we're looking to be able to provide the assistance eligibility period for anybody that would be unemployed for a duration of time between November 1st, 2020 and the expiration of the program. So the program applicant needs to be the person that is the municipal services account holder or co-applicant, meaning they're responsible for the services. However, we recognize that if a person is not on the currently account holder or a co-applicant, we can take that application and put that person as a co-applicant on the account. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, we're looking at providing assistance at the multifamily for multifamily, and that would be $200 provided as bill credits for $50 over four months. And for single-family, it would be $300, applied as bill credits of $75 over four months. Advance, please. The conditions that we're asking customers to comply with is that if they are currently in arrears and have a past-due balance, we would like them to be able to set a payment arrangement. And we would be offering more extended payment arrangements than we currently offer. And that would give them, and while they are receiving the four distributions, they would be, it would be necessary for them to honor the agreement. If they don't honor the agreement, they could forfeit the remaining portion that they have not received yet. If the person is current on their bill, they need to remain current while they're receiving the assistance over the course of the four months. If not, the remaining portions could be forfeited. Next slide, please. So to conclude, staff is recommending that the City Council approve a new short-term $1.5 million Public Benefit Fund Residential Customer Low Income Assistance Program for customers who are experiencing unemployment as set forth in the staff report on attachment one. And two, authorize the Burbank Water and Power General Manager or his designee to administer and implement the program, including but not limited to entering any payment arrangements described therein with electric customers. And with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Councilmembers, questions? Yes, Councilmember Talamontes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Flores, thank you for your report. Reconcised and informative.
Mr. Flores, thank you for your report, concise and informative. Now, how much, I just have one question. How much is in the Public Benefits Fund?
So we currently collect approximately $4.5 million annually for the Public Benefit Fund.
And how long have you been collecting from that?
Oh, shortly after the law was passed, it would be right after 1996.
So that, that fund has been building up?
So we have, for the last few years, we have been underspending it in preparation for what we know are going to be some very necessary investments. And so in the Integrated Resource Plan, we've identified that we are going to have some very aggressive renewable energy goals. We also recognize that we are going to be playing a large role in reaching the greenhouse gas goals in the general plan put out by the city. That is going to require some very capital-intensive investment in the housing stock and other building stock of our city. And so we've been purposely not spending it all, knowing that if we design programs to be able to provide that type of assistance, we don't want to have a stop-and-start type of situation. And that if we don't have the necessary funds to do so, we would not be able to provide the necessary programmatic services that could possibly, to help us reach those goals.
So back to my original question, how much is in the fund?
Yeah, so depending on how much was, is not spending this year, it could be anywhere in the neighborhood of five to six million.
And then if we take this off of it, so we're down to 3.5 million?
So if we, if we were to take, so the, the, that would include money that would be saved as a result of this year as well.
What I'm saying, we have five million, you tell me there's five million in the fund. So if we, if we approve this item tonight of 1.5, we're down to 3.5. Is that right?
Right, so if we, we're collecting about, we're, normally we would collect about 4.5 million. We're going to be using 1.5 of that to be able to fund this program.
Yes, Mr. Somano.
Yeah, so Mr. Talamontis, so we've accumulated, I think, we, we show in our month report, our cash position, so it's, it's shown every month what we have available. It's accumulated to almost seven, I think it may have reached $7 million because our spending rate, because we haven't been spending like Joe was saying. So most recently, it's been going up, and I think he's saying about $700,000 extra more than typical because we do, we do underspend, and this year is maybe $700,000 more we're underspending. So this would be one and a half million off maybe the seven, so you're down to about five and a half afterwards.
Okay, and what, what do you foresee being some public benefits for the future?
There's public benefits, there's the conservation, I'll, I'll talk about renewable because Joe's more on the conservation. So in the conservation, I would say primarily is, is the integrate, is the cost associated with integrating renewable resources. And as you notice, where the ISO California had these blackouts going on, because when the sun goes down, is there's, you have to depend on fossil fuel to make up for the difference. And we're going to be seeing more and more need for energy storage. Energy storage is still a premium, but we're going to be needing to do that, and that's what's used to help integrate renewable. And so we would be, I, I project, I won't be around, but I project that these funds here would be used for elements like that to help bring in more renewables and use them for, when the sun goes down. So primarily energy storage, I would say.
Let me ask you this, the governor just signed a measure saying that he wants to eliminate all cars that use gas by a certain time, right?
Yes.
No more, you can still buy them used, but you can't, the automakers are not going to make them use gasoline, only, only electric.
Correct.
Or a few.
Yes, and very aspirational. And it's, it's important that we maintain a strong, reliable electric grid because I have an electric vehicle on, and I'll tell you, if, I do worry that if I can't go charge my vehicle, what am I doing with this vehicle? And what happened recently with the outages in California, you know, it hampers the adoption of electric vehicles. So it's important that we, we build a reliable system, we gradually bring in more renewables slowly. But we also need to invest in, in, in technology, whether it be load management, energy storage, I mean, use rates, what have you, so that we could maintain high reliability with more and more uncontrollable renewables in our system. And, and so part of the funds, and I know Joe was saying, he's also going to be using like the energy management system, he's going to be using more money to help with, I think maybe part of it would be electric vehicle charging also in Burbank. But, so part of the money would be for conservation, demand-side programs, and the other part would be for helping integrate renewables through energy storage and maybe other technology that Lincoln's group can identify.
Okay, and just my, my direction would be, just to make sure that the people see it. I mean, obviously, this is titled Public Benefit Fund. So I'd like, I'd like to have the people see the public benefits out of all these billions of dollars as we move forward.
Yes, and, yeah, and, and maybe with the next budget, we could highlight that some more, because I know we already appropriated quite a bit with the low income, like Joe has mentioned in his presentation. And for the medical, you know, these lower rates are subsidized by public benefits.
Okay, thank you, thank you, George. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gabe Luddy.
Madam Mayor, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Flores. Can you explain to us why the subsidy for apartments is less than the subsidy for single-family homes?
Certainly. Through our analysis, we know that single families do use less electricity. And then, that's, then, then, I'm sorry, multifamily uses less than single-family. So the incentive is really based off of providing two months of service, two months of electric, average electric service. So when we, when we looked at how much multifamily is using and how much single-family is using, we took that amount and the incentive, the assistance amount is based off of two months of, two months of electric bills.
Okay, my second question is, why is November 1st the key day to start the program and for people to have been unemployed on that day?
So there's two elements of, so starting on November 1st, the first one is administratively, we would, we would need to, to prepare to be able to do this program. It is going to be easily probably the highest-volume program that we would administer. The second is that we recognize that recently in the CARES Act, there was additional language in there that made more folks eligible for unemployment insurance. And so those folks who traditionally would receive a 1099 and so forth, those folks that are more part of the gig economy and so forth, they are now become eligible to be able to receive unemployment insurance. So part of our original proposal when we were developing this was to include folks who were furloughed. However, since the new CARES Act was passed, we recognized that the same folks that we were concerned about were, were picked up as part of the CARES Act. So that was, that was part of the, the reasoning of making it starting on November 1st.
If I understand that correctly, then people who are what you call the gig economy contractors or others, that the CARES Act redefined unemployed in such a way that it expanded to include those individuals?
That is correct. So if you were self-employed or, or receiving a 1099, you are now eligible for unemployment insurance under the new CARES Act.
Okay, and have you thought about looking retrospectively at people who maybe were out of work during the beginning of COVID, but have gotten employment, but they're still behind? What are your thoughts about potentially expanding the program to provide some relief for folks like that?
So we did carefully consider that, and we recognize that during this period, employment has been intermittent. There have been folks that have started and stopped, and then now they're employed again. And so we recognize that if, if we're able to provide folks with extended payment, payment arrangements, we'd be able to facilitate those folks who now, thank goodness, are gainfully employed and have income. And so we will accommodate them, we will work with them. But thank goodness, they're employed and now have the resources to be able to get back on track. And that's really what this program is about. And let me, let me kind of get into one more area that I may not have mentioned about. When we, when we start to distribute the assistance over four months, I mentioned during the presentation that a lot of folks may not be eligible for other resources because they haven't been unemployed for an extended period of time in which their annual income now makes them, would make them qualified for other programs. So if you consider if we started this program on November 1st, a person would receive assistance for November through December, January, and February. That takes us up to approximately one year when the pandemic hit, and people may have become unemployed. We are then be able to be able, assist these customers by providing them not only the assistance programs that we have internally here at BWP, but they could then become eligible for the other assistance programs that are available from federal and state. And those folks, and we know that the federal government has provided even more funding levels to those, to those programs. And so what we think is that all of these folks that are currently unemployed, we can bridge them to that new, to that new year where they can then become eligible for additional assistance. As well as those folks who are gainfully employed, we will then provide them, you know, extended payment arrangements so that they can have an amount that's manageable for them in sustaining their, their, their services.
As you may not know, George probably knows, Mr. Somano, I had some experience with an extended payment program during a time when we remodeled our house, and for one year we got no bill. But then we got a huge bill. It's a long story, but the extended payment process did work, and it was very welcome. So the last thing, Madam Mayor, is I, I think there may be other questions, but I would like to open a discussion about maybe putting some additional funds into this program. So, thank you. I don't know if Councilmember Murphy has questions or you do, but when we get to that point, I, I would like to open that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Murphy, no questions? Okay. I have, what if, what if you have a customer and you can tell that they're no longer able to pay their bill, but they've been a good customer for years previously, but they're not on EDD because for whatever reason they can't get it? So can, are you help, are we helping them? And how do you reach out to them? I mean, how, how are we helping them? I, I've helped a few people, I've tried to help a few people access UI and PU A, and it's a brutal process. And so I mean, they've been good customers, they've been good-paying customers, and now they're not. So how do we help them?
So currently, those folks are able to receive services and defer their bill. And so what this program is saying is that if they are unemployed, this can provide that necessary assistance that they have not received yet, if they're still going through the process with others. However, the unemployment insurance, if they, if they do receive it and they're just delayed in receiving it, they can continue to defer that bill until that resources start to come in. And then we can, we can do the same thing that we would do with all of the other applicants, which would be provide the assistance, provide payment arrangements, put them in contact with other resources that they are able, if they are experiencing sustained unemployment for a longer period of time. So everybody who is in need right now, they're going to receive services and, because we are not doing any kind of late fees or suspension. And if they're just delayed in being able to go through the process with other agencies, this program will be available to them when that, when that, when that finally gets through, and we can, and then, you know, bring them onto this program.
Well, how do you? So the people who, because I've heard, you know, I I honestly can't remember the, the reasons why they've been unable to collect. Some of them were pretty creative. They just got stuck in a loop, you know, you and it, it's just been really difficult for them to get out of it. So they have to come to us with a piece of paper that says, what does that piece of paper from the EDD say?
So the award letter from the EDD says that they've received, they're going to be receiving unemployment insurance, and it specifies the period in which they're going to be receiving that, that assistance.
Okay, what about people who are furloughed?
So folks who are furloughed or underemployed are also eligible for unemployment insurance.
Okay. I'm actually, I kind of agree with, I do agree with Councilmember Gabe Luddy that if there, if we can help, if we can help more people or a larger amount a month, I'm open, I would like to have a discussion, I would like to have that discussion. Since we have $7 million in the fund, yes, Mr. Somano?
Just to maybe partially reiterate what Joe was saying, is that the proposal is equivalent, on average, not for everybody, essentially about two years, I mean, two months' worth of energy, of free energy essentially. It'd be spread over four months. And, and so that's, you know, that's a pretty decent amount, two months' worth of no energy, of energy credit on average. And, but one of the things that could occur that you consider, I mean, is really to get feedback how things are going with the program. If it becomes much longer and stays at this level, should we look at maybe extending it from four months to six months? There, there's different ways to look at it. Or even to the extent that maybe there's even more, I think, Joe, how many, how many, based on that 1.5 million, how many, how many qualify? How many can we handle?
So we would, we would be able to handle anywhere from 5,000 to 7,500.
So, you know, one of the things is you might find out you don't have that many, and you got extra funds, and you decide to kind of extend it. You could, or if we find out we have a lot more than that, we, you know, we'll be reporting back to the board and council, we have, if we're getting that close, that to look at maybe even adding some more funds. But we thought it was reasonable to put something, in fact, what we proposed to the board was a little different, was a little less with some other carrots out there. But, so this is a little bit more than what we initially proposed to the board. It provides two months equivalent over a four-month period, and it finds the dollar limit, and that creates an opportunity, you know, allows us to keep us up in check as far as how much we've done. And if we're going to do more, we go back and have that conversation.
Okay, Councilmember Talamontis, did you want to say something? No. Okay, so I guess I'm still concerned about the people who aren't going to be successful in getting unemployment for whatever reason. They'll never get the piece of paper from EDD saying that they are on unemployment and so they can defer their payments for right now, but they won't have any, they won't be able to benefit from this program to have their energy paid for two months. Is there a way we could extend the program and, and capture some of those people?
Joe?
Yeah, I, we, we, right now, the, you know, the unemployment insurance has really expanded itself to be able to capture as many folks that are needing, needing of assistance. And to be able to try to come up with some other vetting process to determine need, I think, would kind of put us in a situation where, where we're choosing winners and losers. And coming up with what we want to define as low income, we would really have to sharpen our principle and come up with some kind of criteria other than unemployment insurance to determine those folks that may be eligible for the program. So I, I couldn't comment, I don't think I'm prepared to comment on that right now, but I think that the unemployment insurance, because they kept expanding and kept expanding it, is capturing a great amount of is capturing a great amount of folks that are that are underemployed, unemployed, that were self-employed, that were part of the gig economy. So we're seeing a great number of folks that are applying and being accepted into the unemployment insurance.
Thank you.
When we get phone calls and folks telling us, we're not hearing from folks saying, I don't have unemployment insurance. We're not hearing that when we when we're taking the calls and people are when we're working with folks. We're hearing that, hey, I've got the unemployment, I got to make some choices, and I know that I owe some money, can you please help me out in some way? And that's when we're doing the payment arrangements. And with this program, we'd be actually able to say, in addition to the payment arrangements, we're also going to be able to help you with some assistance. So those are the conversations that we're frequently having with our customers versus the conversation where folks are saying that they have they no documentation or anything to be able to say that they're not working.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Gable Luddy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I come down to this. You're to be applauded for coming up with this program. We know that a lot of people, especially people in the hospitality industry, service workers and retail workers, have probably suffered the brunt of COVID. Not necessarily city workers or professional workers or white-collar workers who have kind of discovered that they can work from home and their business doesn't need them to come in every day. And that's had its own benefits, reducing our traffic. But for folks who are in hospitality and retail and services, it's tough. I'd like to put on the table another half a million dollars of funds to help in this program and ask that you come back in six weeks, tell, you know, not six weeks from now, but six weeks after it's set up. And just give us a report back about what's happened, who's been served, talk about, you know, the the strength of your outreach. And and I think that that effort on our part, which comes because of this national health crisis, it would be a really good effort within our city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Telemontis?
Yes, you know, I would second that if that's a motion, Councilmember Gable Luddy. We can add another, you know, half a million to that 1.5, it can go a long ways. I don't know if you're if you're suggesting that we that we change the amounts for families or residents or just be able to extend it even further. We'll discuss that later, but I agree with that.
Thank you. And it is a motion. I mean, I'm happy to put on the table as a motion before we take the main motion.
Right.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. And Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable in adding to it. I mean, we've got our experts here. They're telling us, they're putting out a program that we don't have to do. And I'd kind of like to see how it's going. I have no objection to adding to it later on after we have evidence, but just kind of gut feeling that it's out there and it's necessary, I think is dangerous, especially in light of the fact that they're telling us with this public benefit fund that they have big plans if we're going to reduce our greenhouse gases, which we all want to do. So it makes me uncomfortable. I probably won't support the motion at this time without evidence.
Okay, so should we vote on this first?
Yes, if you'd like, I can take a roll call.
Thank you.
If I could, just to be clear, is is there going to be another motion? Are we keeping the total assistant numbers, the 200 and 300 for our multi? Is that going to be voted on next, or is that not going to change?
I think what we're voting on right now is just to add half a million dollars into the 1.5 million dollar fund, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's the motion.
Yes, that's what I have. So take a roll call, Councilmember Gable Luddy?
Yes.
Councilmember Telemontis?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
No.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Gable Luddy?
And also, and I don't know whether this takes a motion, it may be just a request or consensus of council, ask that we get a report back mid-December. And at that point, that I hope will address Councilmember Murphy's initial hesitations. I understand, I respect your opinion. So do I need to make a motion or can we just agree that we could do a report? Or we you come back with a report on the progress of the project mid-December?
Yes, that's fine with me. And you know, I, so mid-December for a report? And I I think about when we had the CDBG money and we just spread it out over, we wanted to help more people, so we reallocated the money. So I mean, what I'd like to see is to help more people with that, if we're able to do that with that half a million dollars. I don't know what you, Councilmember Gable Luddy, and you, Councilmember Telemontis have in mind. But but so do you?
If I can talk back to you, Mayor?
Sure, of course.
Sure, what I had in mind was, given that, I think we have an expectation that Water and Power always does a very good job of developing the programs. And so this is a program that's new. It's going to take them all of October to get it together, get it going, get the systems up, figure out the protocols, all of that. It may be in that process between October, November, and that you find that there are ways that you can expand it just by the base, by virtue of your own experience, by virtue of who easily qualified, who's right at the edge of qualifying. So I can see that the the staff would be looking for those opportunities to to expand it or make it more readily available. And maybe you might even come back in December and say, you know what, we think that it should be bumped a little. I don't know the answer. I just think that this is a temporary health crisis. This is, we hope, a temporary economic crisis. And that it's not dedicating these funds forever for this use. And it's very possible that the federal government will come through with another CARES Act. There's certainly more hope in the last two days than there was a month ago. So there are many unknowns. I just say we I'm not, so I I guess, Madam Mayor, to answer the broader question of, you know, what's what's the expectation? My expectation is that in the midst of launching the program, our staff will say, hey, you know what, we could do this and this. And when they come back to see us, they'll be ready to fly on that also. So we've given them a cushion to expand it to as many people as possible in accordance with the program that they set up.
Okay, Councilmember Telemontis?
Yes, I'd just like to mention the fact that December 8th would be the date to shoot for. That will be the last meeting for Councilmember Gable Luddy. Because we have a reorg on the 14th, and then the new takes over on the 50th. So December 8th, that's just letting staff know that let's shoot for that, for the report. That gives you a little more time to to look what's happening. Is it worth it? It's not worth it, we're losing. Because you did mention in the initial report the fact that, or until the money's run out, right? And you can give us more an idea how it's going. If it's been received well by the residents or not. So, thank you.
Okay.
And Councilmember Telemontis, thank you for pointing that out. I hadn't, I'm really focused on that. But I think it would also be okay if it was a verbal report with some, you know, some images on on the number of qualifications, not a full written staff report, just clear bullet points and something that we can look at together to learn from the experience. Because I know sometimes the staff writes their report two or three weeks in advance, which means the program will not even have an opportunity to mature very much. So I'd like to ask Mr. Hess if we can do a scaled-back report, but one that nonetheless is really informative.
Yes, Mr. Hess?
Got it. They they all love a scaled-back report. I'm sure of that.
Okay, you heard that? They'll love a scaled-back report. Okay. So we're done here then, right? Okay. Thank you very much for your report. Thank you, BWP, for always doing a great job.
Our last report tonight is for consideration of options regarding parking enforcement activities previously suspended during the COVID-19 pandemic. Will Police Chief Scott LaChasse please commence the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Scott LaChasse, Chief of Police. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant John Fromer, who leads our Traffic Bureau. He is going to make the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. To introduce myself, I'm Lieutenant John Fromer with the Burbank Police Department Traffic Bureau. As you mentioned, we're here to talk about the options regarding parking enforcement activities that we had previously suspended due to COVID-19. In March, just to give a little background, in March of 2020, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health issued the Safer at Work and in the Community for the Control of COVID-19 Order, and this was all in an effort to reduce the spread of the coronavirus. In effect, this included provisions requiring the extended closure of what they deemed non-essential businesses, and individuals were going to remain inside their place of residence as much as possible to assist with slowing the spread of the disease. The implementation of these restrictions resulted in the obvious increase in number of vehicles on our city streets. So due to these extenuating circumstances related to this pandemic, on March 17th, 2020, the Burbank Police Department and the City of Burbank suspended the enforcement activities related to street sweeping, overtime parking in residential neighborhoods, and the 72-hour parking restriction. We left an exemption of a case-by-case basis for obviously abandoned vehicles, which which we did continue to enforce throughout the suspension time period. The resumption of the enforcement for these violations was initially considered in July, and this was with the city determining to continue the, the city determined to make the suspension in effect through September 30th of 2020, which is tomorrow. On September 15th, Councilmember Gable Luddy requested that a report on this, that we report back to you so we can have some items for discussion on potential options for this. How do we resume or if we resume part of these parking restrictions and the enforcement of them? Some things to discuss is the State of California Public Health Officer provided some guidance for certain sectors, businesses, and activities to conditionally reopen as part of the state's pandemic resilience roadmap. So additionally, the Los Angeles County Safer at Work and in the Community for the Control of COVID-19 Order approved the reopening of certain businesses that was effective in July 12th of 2020. So as California has begun to slowly reopen the businesses and permit certain public recreational activities, the jurisdictions around us that impose parking enforcement suspensions similar to us, the City of Burbank, they're considering the reinstitution of the enforcement activities. Give you an idea, the Los Angeles Department of Transportation has previously implemented relaxed parking enforcement for things very similar to the City of Burbank with a couple of, they have extended it to peak rush hour traffic in gridlock zones and ticket and towing for oversized and overnight parking. Now, the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, they're in checking with them and their in their organization today, as of right before the meeting, they are still placing, their suspension was extended until October 1st, which is in effect similar to the City of Burbank. The only thing that they're considering on relaxing on an ongoing basis, they haven't given a specified date on this, but they want to extend street sweeping restrictions. The City of Pasadena, they reinstituted enforcement on August 18th, but they gave a fairly long warning period up to September 15th, when they subsequently resumed issuing citations for their relaxed parking restrictions. The City of Glendale, they plan to resume enforcement when directed by their city council. They're going to be provided with an outline, specified timeline, but that has yet to be determined or released. Before providing the options that we're considering, I would like to talk about a potential environmental impact that we will see based on the pro, on the amount of vehicles that have been remained on the city streets for a prolonged period. The City of Burbank Public Works Department is responsible for cleaning and maintaining the street gutter lines. And they're, they need to remove the debris and trash and and leaves from those gutter lines. A large volume of the vehicles that we have seen on the streets, we've had reports of vehicles being left for the entire period, and we've had reports for weeks to months. And considering that goes back to March of this year. This has impeded Public Works Department's ability to conduct their effective street sweeping. They have continued to conduct street sweeping, but we have to remember they have to move around the vehicles that are still left standing in the parking lanes. So they're not allowed to effectively clean the entire length of the streets. The California State Water Resources Control Board's Municipal Stormwater Program regulates stormwater discharges from municipal separate storm sewer systems. And that's what they call MS4s. The City of Burbank, the the MS4 is going to be defined as a conveyance or system of conveyances to include roads with drainage systems, municipal streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, ditches, man-made channels, or storm drains that are owned or operated by a state. Pursuant to the Federal Water Pollution Control Act or the Clean Water Act, stormwater permits are required for discharges from an MS4 serving a population over 100,000 or more, which would include the City of Burbank. The Public Works Department, again, is required to clean the city street gutter lines. They're obligated to do this once per week. This is an adherence with the MS4 MS4 permit. So without proper maintenance and cleaning of the gutter lines, there's an increased possibility of the debris and trash impeding the screens that they have over the stormwater drains. They're affixed to the catch basins. This increases the potential of flooding to the city streets, and on November 1st, the rainy season is about to begin. There's been a growing number in discussions with Department of Public Works. They have had a growing number of complaints from our citizens about the amount of debris and gutter and clutter in the gutter lines throughout the city streets. That initially started a few months ago with maybe once per week, and now they're receiving multiple per week. Keeping the environmental impact in mind, we have three options that we'd like to present to you, and and this would be for the discussion period. We seek council's consideration of the following options. Continue with the current suspension of identified parking violations. And that which the which will leave the city vulnerable to the flooding due to the inability of Public Works to effectively conduct the street sweeping. That's the potential impact. Resume regular parking enforcement for all parking violations, and we could give, we suggested two-week warning period prior to actually issuing citations to ensure adequate communication with our community. Or we can resume enforcement activities related to street sweeping, street sweeping violations, only to allow for the cleaning of the street gutter lines to alleviate the potential flooding concerns. And continue the suspension of the enforcement activities for overtime parking in residential neighborhoods and 72-hour parking with a request to leave in the exemption of a case-by-case basis investigation on abandoned vehicle reports. In light of the environmental concerns and the reopening of certain sectors of the economy, staff recommends council consider and approve option number two for the resumption of regular enforcement activities with a two-week warning period. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay. Councilmembers, questions? Comments?
Well, I want to say, Madam?
Yes, Councilmember Gable Luddy?
Thank you, Officer Fromer, for a very comprehensive report and for coming back with some options. You know, I favor reinstating our parking rules. And so I'd like to hear from other council members on on their positions on it. I will say, at a minimum, at a minimum, people should move their cars on street sweeping day. The gutters? our environment, it's bad news right now. And we need to get that back in order, and I know I got some communication from residents saying, oh my God, I can't... I can't, you know, I don't know when this is going to happen. Look, we know when streets are cleaned, we know the day of the week, the hours. If individuals cannot move their cars, given all that regularity and warning, then they deserve a ticket at this point. We need to also balance the equation with keeping our environment as clean as possible. So my bottom line is, we must have street sweeping back on a regular basis. I also, secondly, would like to see the parking rules enforced, if only because for folks who live on streets where you have tags, because you have some level of what I'll call preferential parking. A lot of other folks have come and parked on those streets recently as well. That's been the experience of some folks I've talked to, so those are my thoughts on it. Thank you very much, and thank you for your report, Officer Fromer. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talal Montes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I'm going to support staff's recommendation, and by the way, Lieutenant Fromer, happy birthday. Thank you for spending your evening with us. So I think, you know, people can do the fact of the debris and clutter that's building up, and I see it. You know, I drive around along the city and I see the everything that's building up. People are now moving their cars, and people are wanting, demanding to get back to normalcy. So let's get back to normalcy, right? This is one step forward to become normal again. I mean, that's just pre-pandemic, we were doing it. Obviously, we were more flexible, the city and the police department were more flexible throughout the course of the last six months. But let's get back to normalcy, and this is one way to get back to normalcy. So I would support option number two. Thank you, Lieutenant Fromer. Excellent report.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah, I would also support option two. I had a couple of questions, I think. Lieutenant Fromer, if some people were concerned about the two-hour block, so let's say on my street that I move my car at 7:30, and the street sweeper comes by right away, and I can see the track there, even though it says 8 to 10, can someone park there after the street sweeper's gone by, or maybe now because it's so dirty, they might have to do it twice? I'm just curious, because that's what they're asking.
We're very reasonable. This is something I have seen, some community concern emails that came in regarding having to work at home and trying to figure out how to move their vehicle for a two-hour time period, which limits their ability to effectively conduct work from home. We're willing to be reasonable with this, however, I think this question would have to go to Public Works first to understand how they schedule the street sweeping, to make sure they have the effective time available with the cars being moved from that street for that period of time. I think that would be a good question for them, on can they accomplish their mission if we try to reduce that two-hour time period?
Okay, I can ask them as well. I would like to just take a minute to thank you for your responsiveness. I don't think there's another employee in the city who is as responsive as you are. When I pass on items to people, I'm amazed at how quickly you're on top of it and have taken control, and I know I've written at least one note to the chief, that as far as I'm concerned, you should be Employee of the Year, whether it's your birthday or not. So thank you so much for how hard you work. It's incredible. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments.
Since Mr. Berkman's here, can I go to him?
Sure. Do you have a question of Mr. Berkman?
Well, I think it's the same question, basically. If he heard it.
I did, thank you, through the mayor, Councilman Murphy. It does depend on the street and how much trash and leaves and debris there is. It's quite possible there may need to be a second pass, and given the logistic and the way the routes are set up, there could be a situation where the sweeper operator might need to do a second pass. I say that because we know that what's known as the first flush of our rainy season, the first major storm, a lot of debris can be swept into our catch basins, the openings in the curb, and that's really my key concern, is that we take care of that before that major rainfall event comes, because I, as all of you know, I've been here six months, I'm not all that familiar with our flooding issues or areas, but I'm sure in our areas that we would have those. I want to make sure our streets are clean, so I appreciate Lieutenant Fromer's thorough report with regard to our storm drain system, our MS4, so it's hard, I can't pin down an answer, but it's possible that we may need to get a second pass within those two-hour windows.
Okay, so just following up, and I'm asking this based on an email I got today, I received today. If there is a second pass, would it be right away, or would it be like if the first one was at 8 and the second one's at 10, and they just need to stay away, or would it be pretty quick, where they just come around the block and get it again?
I don't know our individual routing. Some can be long, where typically you're doing all right turns to get kind of through a community in straight lines. It could take some time, probably not necessarily like two hours to do the whole route, but it does depend. Some routes are short and small, and it would happen if the operator noticed there was inadequate cleanliness in the gutter as they go by and just swing by again. I would say it would be rare. We have efficient equipment. It should pick up what is in there. It's just that with all the cars that have been parked there for so long, there could be areas that might need another pass.
Okay, I'll probably refer her to you to see if she can get a little bit more detail on 300 North Cedar, if that helps at all, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Again, Lieutenant Fromer, great to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talal Montes.
Yes, real quick, Madam Mayor, Mr. Berkman, you know, there's some cities that I'm aware of that have a notification to the residents when the when the street sweeper goes by. One of them that I'm aware of is Huntington Beach. My son lives there, and he says, they notify you, you get a text or whatever it is, the way they notify... Have you, are you familiar with the ideal system?
I am not, but it sounds like it's something we could contemplate in the future.
Well, just to find out what the cost, how much are we talking about? I mean, anyway, this would solve Councilmember Murphy's question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Because I have my own. I am... I think I'm the only one who supports number three. Just to kind of... Number three is just for on street sweeping day, right, to enforce it? And number two is just going back to like pre-COVID. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So because I don't feel like we're ready for number two yet, but you all.
Okay, so you want me to make a motion?
Yes, we need to.
I motion that we accept staff's recommendation of number two moving forward and get back to normalcy.
Okay, is there a second? Yes, Councilmember Murphy. Yes. Okay.
Councilmember Talal Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Gableletti?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, item four from the consent calendar. So... Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. Christine Ellis, Analyst with the City Manager's Office. I'm here tonight to give you a brief recap of the resolution that is before you for consideration. This resolution was proposed by the City of Cerritos for consideration by members of the League of California Cities and will be voted upon at the upcoming annual conference, which begins on October 6th. The resolution urges Congress to amend Section 230 of the Communications Decency Act, or CDA, to limit immunities granted to social media platforms for dissemination of third-party posts that solicit criminal activity. Historically, Congress has granted companies that facilitate internet communications with broad immunity from civil liability for content posted by users. Section 230 of the CDA specifically states, "No provider or user of an interactive computer service shall be treated as the publisher or speaker of any information provided by another information content provider." Therefore, there exists the potential for social media to be misused for fraudulent or illicit activities with little legal accountability for these companies. An example of such illicit activity would be the advertisement of locations for looting and property damage, which occurred in association with protests earlier this summer. The City of Cerritos expended resources to respond to such posts circulated on Instagram, threatening to loot the Cerritos Mall. Therefore, Cerritos proposed this resolution to encourage federal legislation that conditions immunity from civil liability for social media platforms upon two requirements. First, that online platforms implement a monitoring program to identify and remove content which solicits criminal activity. Second, that online platforms provide law enforcement with information to identify and apprehend users who engage in criminal activity. If either of these provisions are not met, state and local jurisdictions could impose criminal or civil liability on these platforms. Current court precedent, based on Section 230, precludes states and municipalities from enforcing such laws against social media companies. Clearly, the intent of this resolution is good. It seeks to enhance public safety and allow law enforcement to proactively respond to criminal activity by using social media as a tool to monitor potential threats to public safety. Opponents of this resolution, however, cite concerns with the broad and vague language within the resolution that fails to clearly define, quote, "content which solicits criminal activity." Requiring social media companies to police posts based on such a broad characteristic could potentially lead to a violation of First Amendment rights and result in the subjective restriction of free speech. Many large social media companies may argue that they already use algorithms to weed out criminal content, and that limiting immunity originally granted to these companies would be injurious to their business models. Lastly, local law enforcement agencies could potentially see increased costs and liability related to proper data governance for user information obtained from social media companies. Therefore, in light of the positive intentions of this resolution, but due to concerns over codifying and implementing its specific provisions, staff's recommendation was for council to direct the league voting delegate to abstain from voting on this resolution at the annual conference. However, council may choose to take a definitive position and either support or oppose this resolution. That concludes my recap of the resolution, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for your report. Councilmembers, comments? Yes, Councilmember Talal Montes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Christine, thank you very much for your report. I just want to I'd like to urge my colleagues to vote in support of this motion, of this resolution. Let me give you a little background. Today, there were two meetings held. This resolution went to two policy committees of the League of California Cities. The first one, which we dealt with this morning, which I'm a chair of, I chaired the meeting of the Governance, Transparency, and Labor Relations Policy Committee. We had a long discussion, almost an hour, two, almost two hours. But the end result after the discussion, we had Councilmember Burrows from there, from Cerritos, presenting, and as well as a person from that wanted us not to support it. So the end result, after all the discussion and feedback and talking about it, the 19 council members voted to support it, or I should say committee members, 16 voted against it, and there was two abstentions. I was one of the abstentions, because we hadn't... You haven't given direction yet as a council. So that was one policy committee. The second policy committee that it went to for discussion today, which will give a which will send it to the Resolutions Committee, the Public Safety Committee, voted 19 yes, 18 no. No abstentions. So it was close. The votes were very close. And like it's been stated, you know, this is not legislation. This is just opens up a discussion to move it forward, to possibly partner up with the National League of Cities to move it forward to our elected officials in Washington, DC. So let's not confuse what we have before us as the end result. No, this is just to move it further, move it forward for further discussion. So we're not creating legislation tonight. I would just encourage my colleagues to support it, to move it forward, and let's see where it goes. But abstaining, I just don't feel it's right. We should take a vote on it. Either stand with a yes or a no, and like I said, I'm encouraged by colleagues to vote yes. In spite of all the other, you know, committees that have moved it forward as well, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gableletti.
Madam Mayor, I support Councilmember Talal Montes in moving ahead with an affirmative for this resolution. I think Ms. Ellis raises some very good points, especially the question about First Amendment. But I would say in response to that very good point that this is at the beginning of a process, and that there will be, assuming it moves to the federal government, and there are congressional sponsors, there will be a lot of review around whether or not the action going forward is specific enough, so how it applies, and whether or not it affects First Amendment. The League's County Division took an affirmative position in support. And we had the opportunity to listen to one of the council members from Cerritos discuss the on-ground effects that that city had as a result of not being able to clearly track or be alerted to social media posts that encouraged looters to show up at stores. And so part of the problem, of course, is if there are certainly badly intended people out there, mixing with the good, but the bad ones are starting to break into stores, and then they put out on social media, everyone, come on down. What Cerritos faced was they couldn't pinpoint this information, so when they called the Sheriff's Department for assistance, the Sheriff's Department said, oh, sorry, you know, we don't know how bad it is in your town, but we do know we're right in Long Beach right now, and we know it's really bad. So Cerritos, as I understand it, they don't have their own police force, but they were unable to get the kind of quick response that they needed because the law enforcement officers were already doing their hard work in another city. So the point of going forward this kind of legislation is to hold platforms accountable for the announcement or the posting of clearly illegal activity. And as I said in the beginning, I respect a concern about the First Amendment, but this is more an affirmation of providing more tools to local cities that aren't blessed with the kind of police force we have, but rely on other law enforcement organizations. It would be our vote to support them in their quest to get more help. So I support Councilmember Talal Montes in asking for an affirmative vote, and I deeply respect the report that the staff gave us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy.
I'm in. I support what Councilman Talal Montes and Councilwoman Gableletti have indicated. It makes sense to me.
Okay, I also support it, so I need a motion? Yes, Councilmember?
Make a motion. Okay. Councilwoman Murphy, move. I'd second.
Okay. So... Okay. So moved by Councilmember Murphy, seconded by Councilmember Talamontes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Gableddy?
Yes.
And Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Christine. Thanks, Christine. Good report.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Yes, Councilmember Gableddy?
If I can get through quickly. On Wednesday, September 16, I attended a meeting of the Police Commission. Our commissioners were present, asked good questions. There were about three or four people who called in with comments. I believe that this commission and our officers are being very constructive as we move ahead, and of course, as we counsel await their final advice to us in December. On Thursday, September 17, I attended a webinar that was called Leader of the Pack: A Conversation with Blackstone's Ken Kaplan. It was interesting. I'm very wary of Blackstone because, as you know, they have a huge portfolio of single-family homes, and they can be as much a part of the problem as anyone securitizing home ownership. But it was useful, and it gave some insight into how we're emerging out of COVID on the real estate side. On Tuesday, September 22, it was delightful to attend the Burbank TMO Bike Walk Day, on which I saw Councilmember Murphy briefly. But it was a really great presentation, and I hope, Mayor Springer, that you will consider being one of their speakers because you are a champion walker in our city, and you have made it so easy to do. Also, on that same day, I had a Zoom meeting with Arda Chalkian from State Senator Portantino, and we were talking about the proposals for a gondola tram to the Hollywood sign to be constructed in Griffith Park. The point of the meeting was to bring to her attention and the senators some of the concerns of the residents, not only in Burbank, but also in all the neighborhoods around Griffith Park, who treasure its wildland values. Let's see. Wednesday, September 23, was the LA County Legislature Committee and Board of Directors Conference Call. And finally, earlier today, I had, I listened to BCEA new president, Griselda Cox, about some of the issues that they had. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next. Yes, Councilmember Murphy.
I did much the same. I also attended the Bike Walk to Work TMO. I walked there and I biked back, virtually. I also met with Griselda of the BCEA about issues that they were having and had a nice discussion. I also attended the Kiwanis installation. It was their 99th year. Thought I should be there. You know, they do a lot of good work in the community, and it was a fun time for all. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few items. The CA attended the San Fernando Valley Service Council meeting. They had a presentation of the Next Gen. They had a public hearing on the Next Gen project study that they're doing. It's coming to conclusion. I also attended Mobility 21 Virtual Summit. Then I attended the COG Transportation Committee meeting. Let's see. The City Attorney and I met with Senator Hertzberg regarding juvenile tobacco possession. And then I had a LoSan meeting. What else? I had a Governors' Transportation and Labor Relations Chair, Vice Chair meeting with staff for a meeting that was held today. I as well attended the Kiwanis of Burbank virtual installation, 99 years in Burbank. And then I also attended the Metro North County Cities meeting. And like I mentioned early on, today was the Governors' Transportation, Labor Relations Policy Committee meeting. It was the last meeting for me as chair of the committee. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I attended many of the same events, but I did attend the Short Term Rentals Online Community Workshop. Staff did a very good job, and it was the second one that I had attended. And it was good to hear the different sides of it. And I also attended the BizFed Regional Housing Workshop, Working Group Number Three. And I have to tell you that was the, I was, there were elected officials and other leaders, business people from all over our region. And for the, one of the first times, I really felt like we were coming together as a region to address our housing issues, and that all we, you know, with the tools and maintaining local control, we can fill, reach our housing needs. And so that was very encouraging. And I attended the Infrastructure Oversight Board. And that pretty much wraps it up for me. Now is the time for additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Yes, Councilmember Murphy.
I have two items I'm interested in. The first one is with regard to the Sustainability Commission. As you all know, they wanted a sustainability coordinator, and staff recommended that we go with someone in the administration, and it sounded like it might rotate. And I was just curious to get a report on what's happening with that. Maybe a step one report?
We could just provide you an update. I don't think it needs to be a step one.
Okay.
Okay. And the second thing is a little bit more complicated. I know in the past, I've been told to stay in my lane. So I received several emails today from the, from our Armenian community, which is quite large. And for those of you that aren't here at City Hall tonight, there's a rather large demonstration out front concerning an attack by Turkey, and I'm going to mess this up, Azerbaijan, on a part of Armenia that is called Artsakh, and its civilian population. And apparently, Turkey has brought in F-16 fighter planes, drones, and 400 ISIS fighters, and they're attacking civilian population. One of the cities in Artsakh is a city that we have a connection to, Hadret, which is officially recognized by Burmehk as a friendship city. So they're asking us to issue a resolution condemning the aggression there. And I would support that.
Yes.
Go ahead, then. I'll say something.
You cigarette?
Nope, you go.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Hess, did you have a comment?
No, I just was going to say that, one, please don't say whether you're in support or against something like this. And do you want to talk about in the past?
I'm submitting this, then.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes, I just, Mr. Hess, I'd like to have an update in regards to how the enforcement is going in regards to labor cigarettes, and when we took an action that we outlawed them, and see what responses we're getting. A lot of people doing it or breaking the law, or do we know what's our enforcement, what do we do for enforcing that kind of thing?
Sure.
Just want to know the program.
Yeah, we could definitely provide you an update. Just going back to Councilmember Murphy's, we would bring back for consideration whether or not you'd want to do a resolution, if I recall the email. So it'd be a first step for consideration.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to, Ms. Takahashi brought up something, and it's something that I think about now every day, because we were doing so well about reducing waste, reducing the use of single-use bags, takeout containers, and I see so much trash on our streets. And we're not street sweeping, I guess, but.
Not yet. Give me a week.
But.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Like, how are we doing? Like, what's going to our landfill? Can we, is there something we can do to reduce takeout waste? And?
Would you like a report on that? We could bring back a report on that, and you could discuss.
Right, we can discuss what's going on with that, I think, because we were doing really, really well. And also, Ms. Takahashi brought up a community meeting with BPD, and I know we, pre-COVID, we had those. So is it time for a virtual one?
So, I mean, I'd like to, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, just say really quickly that the Police Commission, as you charge them, has, are doing meetings on a monthly basis that are advertised, that are open to the public, as this meeting is through a virtual. The Police Commission is not in a position to do a community meeting right now because of the restrictions placed on all of us. So I just wanted to be clear, I heard her say that, that the Police Commission, as charged by the City Council, is meeting on a monthly basis, and is going through a whole list of topics that both the City Council and the Commission wanted them to study and look at.
That's not exactly what I was thinking about. I mean, we've done, I've not personally gone to coffee with a cop. Maybe there could be a virtual coffee with a cop. I don't know. I've not, but there's also Police and Fire Day that we don't have because of COVID. And so that's.
So that's the point, right?
I was thinking more of a social, more of a social interaction meeting. Yes, Councilmember Talamontes.
Well, you know, things have changed quite a bit. Pre-pandemic was one thing, and then we got hit with a pandemic. So things had to be, you know, pulled back. We weren't meeting as a community as often. There's restrictions, and how many people can be in a meeting. And there's various other boards and commissions that some of these questions should be addressed to.
I.
You know, start with those boards and commissions, and then come to us. Let's try and get results at the board and commission level.
Right. I wasn't thinking about a board or commission meeting. I was thinking more of a social interaction. And like I said, I've not been to coffee with a cop, but.
Because there hasn't been one. There hasn't been.
Okay, right. But everything is, I know that, everything is virtual, and participation in National Night Out, we missed that. So, and that's always very nice to interact.
So National Night Out was canceled, but again, we really shouldn't be having this discussion. And I think, I just ask the mayor to keep in mind policy versus directing to do something. So, and as you know, you did direct your Police Commission to look at the issues around police and police reform.
Right. I'm aware of that. Okay, anything else? We now adjourn in memory of Vincent Stefano Jr. to Tuesday, October 6, 2020, at 6 o'clock PM for a regular meeting through an online meeting process. The public may view the meeting online or on television, and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, burbankca.gov/ecomments, citycouncil@burbankca.gov, by calling in directly to the City Council meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you, and have a good night.